Here we go, folks. Okay, we are on the air, folks, and I'm going to call to order the meeting tonight. It's the Cadillac City Council. It's our regular meeting at an irregular time at 5:00 PM, April 9th, 2012. The meeting is called to order. Could everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with the routine justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do have an agenda ready to go at this point, and I'm going to need approval of that. Are there any modifications, Marcus, with that?
If I may, I'm subbing in.
Okay.
This is the City Council for the City Clerk this evening.
Yeah.
If I can start with the roll call.
Okay.
That would be super.
Thank you. We'll do that. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Melma.
Here.
Shippers.
Here.
Spelman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Burnett.
Here, and thank you for filling in, Marcus, and bringing that up as well as sharing. Approval of the agenda would be next. Marcus, are there any changes that you've got contemplated to the agenda?
There's one request for City Council to consider. If time should permit this evening, I would like us, before we convene to Herring Township, to try and go into a brief, closed session for the purposes of getting quick updates on the following: Mayor v. Blackburn, Herring v. City, and the third was regarding legal opinions from the city attorney on road patrol.
Okay, well, I'll add that, and that'll appear right after the good of the order. Is that okay, Marcus?
That would be the perfect spot.
Okay. So we have an amended agenda. I would seek the emotion at this point to approve the agenda as amended, unless there's anything else.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marcus, could you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Councilmember Spelman.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Melma.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried. We do have an amended agenda. Next up are public comments. There are two sets of public comments in our setup tonight, our agenda. The other one's called "Public Appearances." It happens at the end of the meeting. We try to use this first portion for things that are on our agenda so we can get timely information. But public comments are limited to those items on the agenda at this point, with the exception of public hearings. We have none of those, and it is requested your comment. Time be limited to three minutes. If you cannot wait until the end of our meeting and would like to talk about something not on the agenda, please ask us, and we have routinely let folks speak in that regard. So public comments are open at this time with those directives. Mr. McCurdy's raising his hand, so it appears that you will be first.
This is, I don't know if it's on the agenda, it's concerning, well, it ends up concerning the meeting after this.
Okay.
The council is reviewing, oh, Beau McCurdy, 417 Crestview. This council is reviewing an ethics policy, which I commend you for. It talks about transparency, which sounds good, too. Now, as to ethics and transparency, I have a question. You've heard this before. Councilman Stevens sued the city in 2009 regarding the well field, the water well field. He said the purchase of the well field located in the city was illegal. He lost the suit. Councilman Stevens hired a large law firm from the Lansing area to represent him, the Fahey Firm. The city hired the Miller Canfield Lawyers, one of the biggest law firms, and they paid them $60,000 to get Councilman Stevens throw, no, suit thrown out of court. Now, Councilman Stevens' lawyers, the Fahey Group, certainly did not handle that suit for free. They must have been paid, and that's not a problem. I mean, you know, we understand getting paid. But here's the concern: Who paid Councilman Stevens' Lansing lawyers? I ask this because the lawsuit papers show that a Herring Township resident joined with Councilman Stevens in suing the city. Did this Herring Township residence pay for Councilman Stevens' Lansing lawyers to sue his own city? And did this person have property in Herring that he wanted the city to buy instead of the Blakely property? That question, or this question, has been asked several times, and we still have no authentic answer. If this is not true, if the Herring Township resident did not help pay, or if you paid it yourself, tell us. Let's clear this up. But if Councilman Stevens sued his own city to block the sale of property within the city limits, and if his Lansing lawyers were paid for by a Herring Township resident who wanted to sell his own property to the city, then city taxpayers should know that. You may ask, why is it important now? Why do I bring it up now? Because Councilman Stevens and this council are now meeting with Herring Township about sewer service. Sewer service to Herring is a huge deal. It is a bigger deal if the same Herring Township residence stands to gain from getting city sewer in Herring. If he does, then there appears to be an ethical problem, and there is a transparency problem. Who would Councilman Stevens be representing? The city or the Herring Township's resident? So before negotiations with Herring, Councilman Stevens should clear this up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCurdy. Anyone else wishing to give a public comment? Mr. Fawcett appears to be enough.
Stan Fawcett, 10,200 East 34th Road. I'm really somewhat sorry for Mr. McCurdy. He seems to have some kind of a problem. I don't quite understand what it is. But this is absolute nonsense. But I don't want to get into that right now. Apparently, he needs to run a reading course. Art Stevens asked the judge, and again, as I told Ms. Spelman, you got the papers on it, to determine if three votes or four were needed to buy the property, was it a lawful purpose, purchase, or not. The city hired a lawyer to stop the judge from answering the question, not to fight Art's lawsuit, and it was not thrown out. It was decided that Art Stevens alone did not have the standing, it should have been a class action, to bring this about, to ask the judge. But that's not why I'm here tonight. You know, I have more experience on this than everybody sitting in this room put together. It goes back 38 years, to when the sewer loop was put around Lake Cadillac. The city manager at that time told me one night, walking out of the Wexford County Road Commission garage, where there was a meeting on it, "Herring Township's going to get sewer over my dead body." That was his exact words. And it was no logical reason for it, except he and our township supervisor at that time did not get along. That's when the fight started. Forty years ago, there was no problem. But that actually started over the city's landfill, as I've explained to you folks more than once how it started. Well, it went on, the city manager against Herring Township got so bad, when Four Winds burnt out in Herring Township, the city would not respond to help fight the fire. They wouldn't cross the line, wouldn't go an extra mile. Property at risk, life at risk, it got that bad. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to talk about sewer and water together. I'm going to make it brief. I know you've got a lot to do tonight. But the sewer and water is kind of an away-one issue. Herring wanted to buy water from the city? Say, "Well, we don't want to sell it to you." So now we see the city water tower. You can look, if you're on top of the hill by the city water tower, you can look out and see the Herring Township water tower. What did the city gain by that? Lost revenue by not selling water. But we got water out there, and I'm afraid it's too late on the sewer issue. I'm afraid it's far too late for amends to be made and parties to agree. Over the years, different council people, one on one, said, "Boy, we ought to go out and talk to the Herring Board." I've tried to talk the Herring Board into coming down and talking to you, but nobody wanted to. It was always, "Well, the lawyer advises us not to." Well, you know what's about to happen? Herring Township is really close to start building its own system. Then it will really look smart, the people in this area, "Here's a sewer plant, there's a sewer plant." People are going to wonder, what is wrong with those people? Try and work something out, please, as hard as you can, that is, I don't even want to use the word "fair," but reasonable to both parties. Because I don't understand, by fighting and not wanting to sell sewer to that area, what you're going to gain. You've already had to raise rates, and I'm talking about water and sewer when interchangeable, because usage was down about three years ago. It was reported in the paper. Now, if Herring pulls out, the use is going to drop more yet. You're going to have to raise rates higher probably for the city residents. You've got like a 40% extra capacity in that sewer plant. The ideal situation, which I don't think will happen, in fact, I don't think anything's going to happen, but the ideal situation would be a sewer and water authority. Four townships in the city. Or maybe just one township in the city, whatever would work. The next in line would be the city to sell services. Get a premium for it. Charge them a buy-in fee, whatever you want. It doesn't matter. But try and work something out, or we're going to have two sewer plants, and both entities are going to lose. That's about all I've got to say. I think you suggested one time, three years ago, about maybe we should meet with the township. The lawyer at the time said, "No, don't do that." Well, that's how we got to where we are today. It's just a damn shame. So please, try and work something out. And one last thought to Mr. McCurdy. I am already in the sewer district, in case you don't know it, and I am 70 years old, and by the time the contract with the city expires, I'll probably be dead. It doesn't help me one bit, and it's none of your business, who I pay for what. It's none of your business, Mr. McCurdy. You seem to want to get your nose in everything you can.
All right, gentlemen, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public comment period? Hearing and seeing no one come forward, thank you, everybody, for that information. Next is our consent agenda, and we have three things on there. It looks like our City Council minutes from March 19th. That was a regular meeting. We have our City Council minutes from our special meeting on March 19th. That also occurred, and we had a council retreat on March 17th. All those minutes are in the consent agenda, and I entertain at this point a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Marcus, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Melma.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried. Next up are proclamations, and we have a proclamation proclaiming April as month of the young child. Nikki Schultz is in the house tonight.
My son would like to accept this for us, if that's okay.
All right. What is your son's name?
Austin Michael.
Dustin Michael?
Austin Michael.
Austin Michael. Come on up here.
Thank you.
Austin, you're a young child. Thank you for coming for me.
He's kind of a big boy.
Well, I think he's, this is the month of the young child, and I think he's going to call off by, can you turn around so your mom can see you a little bit? All right. And maybe a quick, couple words with whom you work for and why you're here tonight?
I'm with the Wexford and Sockeye, Great Start Collaborative, and I'm the co-coordinator, and I work with the community, just getting the word out and advocating for early childhood.
All right. Thank you very much for doing that. And on behalf of the city, I'd like to read this proclamation and hand it to Austin, and it is reading as follows. Whereas young children are the future of our community, whereas one-third of children entering kindergarten in Michigan lack some of the skills needed for success, and whereas young children and their families depend on high-quality programs that provide for their care and education, and whereas for 37 years, High Scope Foundation researchers followed high-risk three- and four-year-olds that received a quality preschool program and found they were more likely to show improvements in educational performance, including higher test scores, reductions in special education, grade retention, school dropouts, increases in high school and college graduation rates, and less juvenile delinquency. Whereas upon adulthood, there was less criminal activity, higher earnings, and tax revenue by child and parent, lower absenteeism rates from work, reductions in welfare necessity, and reductions in child abuse. And whereas the city of Cadillac wishes to join with the Wexford and Sockeye Area Great Start Collaborative and its member agencies, which one of them, I believe, is the Chamber of Commerce at this point, in the celebration of April as the month of the young child, as Austin is a young child. Now therefore be it proclaimed that April 2012 is declared in the city of Cadillac the month of the young child, signed by Mayor Barnett and the city of Cadillac, and all citizens are invited to duly note this wonderful occasion. So, Austin, I'm going to hand you the proclamation at this time. Thank you for being patient and a nice young man, and keep up the good work with your mom. All right. Public hearings, we have no public hearings tonight, so we will move to communications. And we have no Chris tonight, as she's not able to be here, Marcus. So are you going to take over on this as well?
I will. I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We did receive a request from the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau to close Mitchell Street from approximately 2:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon on July 18th, 2012, excuse me, June 18th, 2012, for the parking of classic cars, which is a part of the Back to the Bricks promotional tour. The tour will be discussed, I believe, in a little more detail by Joy Van Dree. We did discuss this in some detail with staff. The only concerns that we had had were with respect to the ability of getting volunteers out to help close Mitchell Street during that period of time. I've had some conversation with the director of the Visitors Bureau, who's also had conversation with our public safety, and I'm confident that between the CERT team, which is a group of dedicated volunteers, some of our own staff, the county, we'll be able to, we'll be able to work it out. We also may have an issue with respect to the number of barricades involved, but that, too, I'm fairly certain we won't have a problem in working out those logistics either. So as far as the staff recommendation, we're in favor of this event. Joy, if you could perhaps describe a little bit more about it, that'd be great.
Sure. Are you familiar with the Back to the Bricks Festival down in Flint? It draws about 8,000-plus cars, classic cars, to that area in August. And this is a promotional tour, and it, they invite some of those car owners to travel with them throughout the state. And it starts, they leave Flint on June 15th, and they go to Mount Pleasant, Grayling, Grayling to Traverse City, Traverse City to Cadillac, Cadillac to Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids to Sturgis, Sturgis to Tecumseh, Tecumseh to Flint, Grand Blank, and then they drive into the Museum Auto Fair on June 23rd. So this is a promotional tour. They, we end up, we'll have at least 100, if not up to 150, of their cars driving simultaneously as basically a parade from Lake City, and they come all the way through that entire timeframe. So from, up in Traverse City that Monday morning, they'll be leaving Traverse City about 10:30, arriving over in Lake City area, Baker College, New Transportation Center over there. They're going to have lunch there, and we're, I'm coordinating through Kim Moser over at the Lake City Chamber of Commerce, and this is a nice collaborative process as well. So about 3:00, they will leave Lake City, and they'll proceed over to Cadillac. And then at that point, we'll bring them in to 55, and the goal is to bring them and park them at Angles down Main Street, and as well as fill up the middle lane with two lanes, because we could have 100, 150 of their cars, and we're also going to be inviting the local car clubs, which we have several of them. So it could really be a huge, huge event. Kind of odd, I know, because it's on a Monday, but that's just how the cookie, how the cookie crumbles here, and we're excited to be able to host them. It's a built-in promotional event. We have discussed some alternate, some alternate placement. Because of the pure volume of cars, Main Street is the most, or is the best situation for that. They'll also all be wearing lanyards, so, you know, the little hanging tags or whatever. We're working out with our downtown stores and the local restaurants in the greater Cadillac area. They'll be offering promotions, because at 7:00, the timeframe down on Main Street will end at 7:00, and then the cars will do a cruise around Lake Cadillac, and they'll be able to go meander around in the Cadillac area, and then they're all going to be spending the night in Cadillac. So that's 100 and some rooms here in the area as well that night.
About the closure, is that the first time in recent history that road has been closed totally? Or what's the history of closing Main Street down? Is this half of Main Street, or?
It is from Cass Street to Pine Street.
The whole thing's shut down?
The whole thing's shut down, on both sides.
Ever happening before?
You know, I believe back when I was a child, it was probably closed down. I remember hanging out for Moonlight Madness and some other programs. Probably in the last 10 or 15 years, probably not so much.
Wasn't there a problem with MDOT allowing that just as a policy, or in the past?
Well, what we're asking here is for you to amend your parade. Because it's not a full day, it's not a multiple day, we are actually asking you to amend your annual parade listing to the state, to MDOT. So this would be bundled in with that annual listing. It's just going to be a stationary event for a short time.
And if I can add, we administratively did that last week, sent it to MDOT, and MDOT didn't have any feedback for us.
Okay.
It was recommended to do that.
Do you foresee in future festivals, we could close down Main Street again?
I think a lot of it depends on how well this goes over. I know we, myself and Gabby Chapman, who works at the Visitors Bureau with me, we personally visited every business along that, that would be impacted along that corridor. And we only had one business that was slightly concerned with it, and it was the owners of the business who don't live in the community. So everybody was really excited about the opportunity downtown that it would be to be able to do it, so.
Sounds like a lot of things we could have done in the past might have fit right there on that same stretch, even a shorter two-block area.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to promise anything for the future. I just, I'd like to get this one, get it behind us, and, or get it in front of us, get it approved, and then make it a successful event so people want to do it more, and we route traffic safely and everything else in the area.
Okay. Very good.
Any other questions?
No. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting together another event.
You know, I think sometimes these things work well if we can somehow communicate it in advance. You know, the nice thing about the fact that we have a freeway now is that we do have another row around Cadillac. I mean, I've been in smaller communities where the only way through the town, basically, other than the side streets, is the highway. But we have some options, and if there's a way that we can try to communicate this in advance, maybe that should alleviate some of the consternation that some folks might have trying to get through town. I don't know, just a thought, since I'm hearing this for the first time, so.
And that was one of the reasons, I believe, we're putting that on that list, because that list gets coordinated with other, other construction programs and other construction programming and everything as well, for any road closures statewide.
So this diagram in here is where the local traffic would go, then? I think it's, sounds great.
And a lot of people downtown.
Yeah. So I move to approve the request from Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau to close Mitchell Street from 2:00 to 7:00 PM on June 18th for the parking of classic cars as part of the Back to the Bricks promotional tour.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion from council? Hearing, no discussion. I will pass this over to Marcus, our acting clerk tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Melma.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Motion carried, and good luck to you, Joy. Thanks for bringing some more excitement to our community, pulling off the street closure from the state side. Nice work.
Not done yet.
Getting closer. All right. Thank you again. Mr. Clerk, can you also act as city manager tonight?
I will try.
And if so, you're up next.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item this evening is a request from the McCallum family with respect to having poultry chickens in their home. I do believe that Mr. Adams, his brief presentation to run us through, but you should all be pros at this, at this point in time, I think. In my short tenure here with the city, this is now the third request?
This is the third request.
This is the third request. In fact, too, that and, I have had some rather limited and brief discussion about perhaps amending our code as this becomes more common, to put in authorities for these types of requests to be handled administratively in the future. But before we have anything like that, we have to follow what our code is to date, and that does require council approval. Jerry, if you could run us through it, that'd be great.
Very quick. Right, the McCallums are here tonight, too. They're in the back row, so in case the council would like to ask them any questions. The McCallums have requested permission to house chickens at their home, which is at 531 West 13th Street. And I've got a real quick PowerPoint here. The general location, or the location of the property, this was in your packet, I'm going to set here, it'll be easier, I believe, but the subject property is highlighted, surrounded by the yellow border or line, just to kind of acquaint you with the location of the property. Running east and west is 13th Street. Just to the west, this is part of the Four Winds complex. To the south is the public well field, essentially vacant property now, from the standpoint, there aren't any major significant structures on it. To the east is an area, it's zoned industrial, but it is being utilized as residential. These historically were, or homes that have been there for an extended period of time, as is the property, or the dwelling on the property in question, all of these properties are zoned industrial as well. And then across the street, you run into Herring Charter Township, and those properties are zoned industrial, or residential. In terms of the property, just a few, I think, important points. Unlike the other two requests that you had, this particular site is a little bit larger. This site is almost an acre in area. I think it's about 200 to 300 square feet less, but almost an acre. It is zoned industrial as opposed to residential, does have a home, a pre-existing home, so it can legally, legally be there. In terms of the nearest neighboring dwelling unit, which happens to be in Herring Charter Township, is over 200 feet distant from the coop, so it's a long way away. You'll see the structure on the east on the property next door, but that's a garage, essentially. So most of the homes in this area or nearby are closer to 300, a football field away, so really not a lot of, lot of homes that are close, or residential neighbors, I should say, that are close to this, this property. The site, as you can see, and I've got a blow up of it in a second, it's bordered at least on three sides by conifers, pine trees, and in fact- least on three sides by conifers, pine trees, and in fact, they have a garden in this area right here. The chicken coop will be centrally located, it's a storage, an existing storage shed, it's about nine by 12, and it's going to have a run, just a blow up of their property, their site. Again, the home up in the northwest corner, the coop, the chicken coop, more or less in the middle of the property, and you can see the dimensions from the associated property lines, 76 feet from the west property line, 71 feet from the south property line, 117 feet from the east property line, and about 66 feet from their home. Again, these photos were in your packet, I won't go over them, just some shots of the property. We staffed, as is required by ordinance, we did do a, what's called a report. Essentially, it's a zoning administrator's report, again, that was included in your packet. In that report, the ordinance is not specific per se as to what the report shall include, so we more or less followed the two prior reports, which the council accepted. And essentially, the bottom line is that, based on staff's findings, we really have no reason to not believe that the chickens in the coop shouldn't be allowed. We do, however, have some conditions, and these conditions are consistent with the conditions that you attached to the other two approvals. The first one is, in this case, not to exceed 10 chickens before you approve four and five chickens. The reason staff felt that 10 chickens was more reasonable was due to the location of this site, as well as the size of the property, and the distance from surrounding homes. We suggest that a condition, if you approve this, that it be hens only, no roosters, even though there aren't a lot of residential property owners or residents around, we felt the noise could be an issue if a rooster was allowed in this area. That the coop and the run at all times be maintained at least 50 feet from the surrounding property lines, based on the size of this site, that should not be an issue. That the chickens not be given free range, but that they be retained in the coop and the run. That the coop be properly designed, so as to essentially protect the health and safety of the chickens, the residents, you might say, of the coop. That the coops shall be maintained in sanitary condition at all times. That any chicken feed be properly stored, basically in containers such that it's rodent proof. That any waste be properly disposed of. And that this approval shall not run with the land, but that it would run with the applicant. This isn't zoning approval, so you can do this. And in this case, the applicants would be the McCallums, so if they were to move, let's say, for example, the new owner would have to come back to you if he or she wanted chickens. And essentially, that failure to comply with the conditions would revoke the approval. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. And again, the McCallums are here, if you'd like to ask them any questions.
Well, thank you, Jerry. It's interesting, because you spent all that time, the first time around, on chickens, and you're getting your dividends coming back, and with all that work you've already done, it's, you don't have to recreate the mousetrap every time, so it has paid off in this case.
Or the chicken coop.
So.
I have to say this, a lot of the work we did before was aided by the Cooperative Extension Service from Michigan State University. They provided a great deal of information, very useful information to us, that we were able to use in the first, our initial review of this matter, or matters like this. Thank you.
All right. Well, there's a nice nod of approval to the Michigan State Extension Office, so nice work there. Does Jody, you or your family wish to talk to us at all today, and add anything that might not have been said? Do you have some of your kids?
Um, myself and Libby and Derek started it, and we have a nice little coop that we built.
Okay, do you mind coming up by our mic, so the folks back home?
Sorry.
It's all right, you can give us your name and address. You want to bring the youngsters up, too, that's fine.
I'm Jody McCallum, 531 13th Street. This is Libby, and this is Derek, and we've had the babies, had the chickens since they were babies. We have a nice coop that we've built for them, and if it's approved, then we will go ahead and add a run, which would be open, but will be closed, so they can't get out, and they won't run, ever run free in the yard. And it's been fun, we've never had chickens before, so it's been a learning experience. We're going to get involved with 4H through it, so we hope that we can continue to have them.
Okay. And are you willing to work through the conditions that were laid out?
Yes, actually, we do have 12 chickens, but I know somebody who will take two of them, so I will give two of them to them.
Okay. I assume you started this not knowing the city might approve?
Yes, I realized that after I started this.
Well, thank you for coming forward. Appreciate you coming forward, and nice to meet your kids, thanks for bringing them tonight.
Okay.
Do they wish to say anything?
They don't say anything. No.
They haven't talked all night, they've been so polite.
Yes, quiet. They do a lot of the work, whenever they're there, they go in and do their fair share of keeping up with them, so they haven't lost interest in it.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. How would council like to proceed on this?
I think we better go ahead and approve this request, so we don't have any more clam dust and chickens in the city. I move to approve the request from Jody McCallum to house chickens at 531 West 13th Street, with the conditions set by the staff.
Support.
Okay. Council, any other discussion on this matter?
Well, I do want to see us move forward with just developing an ordinance that allows this to happen, without having each individual applicant come before council, that way.
Take it to the next step?
Yep.
Yeah.
And would probably include many of the same things that are on the board right now.
We've learned, I think we can move to the next step.
We're getting chicken smart. All right. Anyone else from the other side of the table here tonight? Anything on the chickens? Any poultry comments?
I just think it's always nice, they all deserve a lot of credit, sitting there so quietly, that's, I know these are hard, I know you're probably really into the meeting, but it's still a little bit hard.
It's hard for me to sit quietly.
Okay. Just double-checking, we have a motion and support. Anything else prior to voting? Marcus, can you ring us up, please?
Be happy to. Councilmember Melma?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good luck to you guys, and thanks again for running through the process, and nice to meet your kids as well.
Dad.
Next, Marcus, looks like you have a couple more things here.
One second, just to get access. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in your packet this evening is a draft that we had received recently from Foster Swift with respect to local preference ordinance. This is still a draft, there's no action for the city council to take tonight. I just wanted to kind of refresh your memories about the discussion that we had. This draft was put together based upon the direction that the city council provided to me and to staff a couple of months back. There are a couple of sections in which I noticed this afternoon, that I personally would like to see us clarify and fine-tune a little bit. The first section is under Cadillac bidder subsection number five. This is with respect to looking at the percentage of work completed by subcontractors. I've had some limited discussion with staff. My personal thoughts on that would be to pull that section and any reference to that from this proposed ordinance. The issue that I have is that the, the staff are not necessarily equipped to go through and try to vet where every subcontractor hails from. Certainly, the general contractor, or the principal company in which the city is contracting with, will obviously be able to determine whether or not they meet the definition of local. Additionally, there's the possibility, if a provision like this, whether we keep it at 50% or some other percentage, if that remains, we could actually find ourselves in quite a conundrum, where you might have a company, and I'm just pulling this out of the thin air here, let's say the company's from Indiana, but they're going to say that 80% of the subcontractors working on the job are from Cadillac, and then you get a company from Cadillac, that for whatever the case is, let's just say that, you know, 100% of the subcontractors are coming from Wisconsin. I'm making this up to show you a gross example of a possibility by having that section in there, which is why when I, when we prepare another draft for you to actually look at, and then to set a subsequent public hearing for, it's my desire to not have that in there. The only other area that I wanted to clarify has to deal with, under State of Michigan bidder subsection C, there needs to be some clarifying language with respect to, if you will, the pecking order, or the priority. Now, the priority given is correct in the way that it's shown in this draft ordinance. However, again, there could be a problem, where perhaps you have the lowest bidder being from, oh, I don't know, Indiana again, I'll use Indiana again, and then you have the second lowest bidder perhaps being from Lansing, and then you have a city of Cadillac bidder that is within the 5%. I just want to make sure that that bidder from the city of Cadillac, because they're within the 5%, still has the chance to price match to the lowest bidder. And right now, the way that it's drafted, it doesn't quite explicitly say that, and you could get into the argument between, does the Cadillac bidder have the ability of superseding, if you will, another Michigan bidder, or another bidder from one of the four townships? My, you know, my position, or at least what I'm advocating, is that yes, a local Cadillac bidder would, as long as they're within that 5%. And I just wanted to make sure that that was cleaned up enough to where it's explicitly clear. So again, I just put this on our agenda today, it's just a little refresher, there's a lot of documentation in your packet that would actually, if we wanted to set a hearing, you could do so. I'm not advocating that we do that tonight, tonight, there's no action being requested. Those were a couple of the quick changes that I saw, that I'm going to bring forward in the next draft. If there's something else that you'd like to see, let me know, rather soon, because I would like to perhaps have this up, where we set a public hearing at our next meeting, which should be a week from today, and if, you know, as long as we don't have any real major contextual, you know, contextual changes to it, that'd be great. So I'll stop talking at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Petcher. Looks like you don't need any action from council on that. Does anyone wish to chime in on any thoughts with regard to what's been talked about so far?
No, I think it's good that you're giving it another draft and that much thought. Thank you for doing that, finding some of those loopholes in there that we can maybe close.
Okay, thank you. Sherry, anyone else? Hearing none? Keep on rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item is a request from LJR Enterprises for an off-premise sign. Mr. Louis Richardson Jr. is here this evening, so he may wish to address the council before you take a final action. In summary, Mr. Richardson Jr., owner of LJR Enterprises, operates a portable food vending stand on Lake Cadillac during the warm seasons of the year, and has done so, actually, over the past eight years. The stand is normally positioned near the northwestern corner of the public parking lot, west of South Lake Street, across from the farmer's market site, and he typically sells hot dogs, chips, soft drinks, and related such items during the day. The cart does need to be removed at the close of every day, and a portable sandwich board, an A-frame type in design, that alerts passing motorists to the cart, is normally placed on the lawn area of the city park property on the pavilion side, nearest the northwest corner of South Lake Street and the Cass Street intersection. And again, the sign is placed during operational hours, and as with the cart, needs to be removed, needs to be removed daily. Mr. Richardson would like to try and increase public awareness, and as hereby again before you again this evening, as he's been in the past, with a request for an approval of an off-premise sandwich board sign, to be placed in the downtown area during the operations of the vending station. He'd like the sign near the Mitchell and Cass Street intersection, or perhaps other nearby intersections. Under the city zoning ordinance, the sign requested by Mr. Richardson is classified as both an off-premise sign and an encroaching sign, and it's not allowed unless otherwise granted by the city council. There are certain signs, as I'm looking through this, in the B2 district or the core downtown, governmental signs such as traffic control signs, encroaching signs, that are most largely prohibited. Notwithstanding the above, the ordinance does authorize the placement of off-premise signs and encroaching signs, if they are determined to be of a general public interest under provisions of your code, section 46-664, and to be classified, they must meet the following criteria. Signs must be limited to the activities and operations of units of government and nonprofit agencies. Signs shall be for the purpose of providing a benefit to the public well-being or general welfare. Signs shall not conflict with or result in harm to existing land uses, and should not, shall not conflict with traffic control signs and devices or cause potential harm to the public safety. Examples of signs that have been approved, the United Way campaign signs, CW TA midday Shea Route signs, Cordos Hill Historic District signs, Zion Lutheran Church craft show signs, Wayfinding Trail signs, and industrial park entry signs. The staff opinion at this point, with respect to the proposed sign, is that it does not meet the required criteria detailed by the provisions of section 46-664. Specifically, the sign does not reflect the activities and operations of a unit of government or nonprofit agency. Staff understands that the operation is a private for-profit business. There has been no evidence presented by the applicant to demonstrate the sign will provide a specific benefit to the public well-being or general welfare. The sign represents an off-premise food service business that competes with established downtown food services and businesses located on Mitchell Street. There has been no evidence presented by the applicant to demonstrate the sign will not result in the loss of customers for downtown food service operations. It is the purpose of the sign to draw people from Mitchell Street. I want to mention at this point as well, that it was brought to my attention earlier today from Jerry Adams, our community development director, that there's been a question or concern brought up from Mr. Richardson regarding the actual placement of the food cart itself. I have the authority of advising or allowing the actual placement of the cart. I do believe there was a meeting that Jerry and Mr. Richardson were going to have last week, that didn't happen, not quite sure exactly why. As Jerry has communicated to me, he's still more than willing to meet with Mr. Richardson and try to identify other locations, if he so wishes, to where the cart can be placed. So he's not necessarily locked into any one specific location, but we do, on an annual basis, as part of the licensing itself, identify those areas. But where they are, we don't necessarily have major issues, we just want to make sure it's being communicated accordingly. There are a variety of options that perhaps you have this evening. One is, council shall make a determination as to whether the request represents the sign of a general public interest meeting criteria of section 46-664. If the council does approve the sign, it's one of general public interest. It is then recommended that the council, or excuse me, that the approval be conditioned as follows, and, excuse me, there's a variety of conditions, I'll try to run through them quickly. One, the sign shall be only displayed on the days during which the food vending stand is in operation. Two, the timing of the display may begin one hour before the food vending stand is open to the public, and shall end no later than the one hour after the close of the operation. The sign shall not be displayed during the days of the operation of the farmer's market. The sign and sign placement shall meet all requirements of the Michigan Department of Transportation. If said sign is positioned right away under the jurisdiction of MDOT, the sign shall be properly stabilized to prevent movement by winds. The sign shall not disrupt the movement of pedestrian traffic. The sign shall not be placed in any sidewalk segment on which a The sign shall not be placed in any sidewalk segment on which a portable sign has been placed by a business owner pursuant to the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Sidewalk segment refers to that portion of the public sidewalk abutting in existing business building. And finally, the sign shall not exceed the portable A-frame size limitations of the B-2 district and shall be maintained at all times. I know there was a tremendous amount of language that I just spewed out to everybody. So, as I mentioned before, it's not the staff's recommendation to approve this. As I also mentioned before, I know that there might be an issue with respect to the current placement of the cart that I'm able to work out administratively. And then lastly, Mr. Richardson is here this evening. I'm not quite sure if he wishes to approach council or not.
Can I ask just a few questions before we get to that? We had left this issue before. He had come on one occasion, I believe it was voted 3-2. It was a prayer council against allowing an off-premises sign. And then I think he came back a second time or maybe even a third, but at some point he had walked away thinking we were working on, and I know we were investigating a off-premises sign system that we would put into place. People on Main Street would be able to drive and see, you know, bowling alley that way or city park that way, lake that way, hot dog cart that way, Kirtland Terrace, whatever, you know, important.
Still in the hands of the DDA.
Okay. So that, how long has that been? Two years or so?
I believe they hit that last.
Was it last year? Okay. Where's that going? Where are we with that?
Jerry, do you?
Yeah. The DDA appears like it's finally in a position to do some physical improvements downtown again. Our budget is kind of back on track, so to speak, in that we're paying off certain debts. And so I think probably either this summer or next year, we'll, you know, hopefully have some sort of what I call off-premise directional signage that will lead to certain features, because we'll have the money to do so now. The DDA is supportive of doing that kind of signage. It just was a matter of having the dollars to do so. And just to clarify a couple of things, if I might.
Sure.
I did get to meet with Mr. Richardson last week, and we did discuss other locations. And I told him that I would be meeting with, with Marcus to try to work those out. So I think that, that part has been resolved. In terms of the staff recommendation, essentially, and I, I did, again, I talked to Louis last week, he's aware of this, nothing has changed. The, the situation remains the same as it has for the past several years. And, and so therefore, essentially, because there has been no change, the findings were identical. And is, it wasn't in the report, but I've mentioned this before, we have had other businesses that are on the side streets that have requested the possibility of having signs placed on Mitchell. That's why the DDA went so far as maybe we better start looking at some sort of, of wayfinding system or to try to help some of these businesses. And we can see that only increasing. You know, there's a new restaurant that's going to be going in right across the street, so to speak, from where the vending stand normally goes, and they haven't come in and asked for off-premise signage. But if we allow off-premises signs, it's, it's difficult, you know, where, on a more permanent basis, where does it stop?
Marcus, is it true that the farmer's market is also profitable? I assume those farmers are there to make money. They're profitable. They are not nonprofit or, most people would say they are not city activity. I find when we're contracting with people like the farmer's market, we become, it becomes part of our city activity, and to me, putting a, a hot dog cart on the lake is what our city residents would want, to go down there. But I disagree with that. But isn't, isn't the farmer's market still using an off-premises sign? And they are not an operation of unit of government or a nonprofit. It might be an activity that we've permitted and we've joined in with them, and I think that skirts around the concern we would have with the other businesses that we don't have a contract where we're letting them operate on our city property. I guess my point is, we're allowing the farmer's market, and have over the last two years since he originally came here, and other businesses presumably have asked as well in that time period and been denied and haven't come to this level. But isn't it true, we're still using, allowing them to place an off-premises sign to this date? It was there last summer anyway, and I haven't seen anything, because I don't think they've been open yet, or have they just opened?
The farmer's market?
Yeah. July?
Yeah, I don't think they're open yet. And you are correct, the farmer's market has had off-premises signs in the past, and the reason why they've been there in the past is due to a general public safety concern for general public safety and welfare. The farmer's market is more of a destination location. It impacts traffic flow down Mitchell Street and the side streets. It helps to direct that additional traffic to the location for those purposes, which is why the sign has been there in the past.
So that's sucking away from our grocery store over there and, for example, same situation. They sell produce and their, their, people are being sucked from Main Street under our theory. Correct? Isn't that just the same thing? We've got this, if we're going to be consistent with folks, I mean, wouldn't a way to handle this, to let him put his sign up on the same days they put it on until we get this straightened around? Isn't that a fair way to handle it?
Again, the, the reason why the farmer's market sign has been there in the past has been for the purposes of the increased traffic that comes to the community, not, not because of it being a, a competition to Mitchell Street grocers or, or other such purveyors of produce. There's been the concern that there's more traffic, more people that are coming in specifically to the, to the farmer's market, whereas the, the type of vendor or vending that is happening on the lakefront, which we certainly encourage through the, through the, through the stand, is not necessarily a destination type business, unlike a Glenn's or a, or another, another business or the farmer's market. I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Well, and I think the other.
That was, that was the reason why it's been a long.
The other criteria that the sign shall be used for the purpose of providing a benefit to the public well-being or general welfare, you know, I, I think the farm market fulfills that role.
It does.
Certainly has a broad public interest.
I think the hot dog cart does. If you would have seen Mayor Blanchard on seven and four, probably 10 years ago, beaming on what a wonderful destination our lakefront is. I don't know how we could say that wasn't, plus it still doesn't slip away from the nonprofit.
The farm market is an association, by the way. It's.
But ultimately, it's the council decision, which is why you're talking about.
Which is a business, I mean, they're making profits, just presumably the hot dog guy's making some profits too. This is his seventh year there.
I know that last year, Mr. Richardson talked about how, you know, he employed people who were handicapped and gave back to other things, and I asked about nonprofit status and, and because if it was a nonprofit, he could still make a living as an employee of that nonprofit. But as, as Mr. Adams said, nothing has changed. And I, I also, I disagree that it's the same thing as the farmer's market, because I don't know of anyone who drives in from the outlying townships to pick up a hot dog. But I know there are people who drive in from the outlying townships to go to the farmer's market. So I think in that, that's what makes it more unique and that it is a, you know, a safety, traffic, directional sign for that purpose. So I really don't think, I think you're comparing apples to chickens when you compare those two. Although it's a, it's a good business, it's nice to have that business there, and it does add to the ambiance of down, of the lakefront. It's not, it's, it's not the same thing. And there are, there are people who sell lunch downtown and pay those, those taxes to have that location and be able to advertise there. And if I can go and put a sign up at the entrance to downtown saying, "Come get lunch over here," instead of downtown, I think that, that could be, I think that's why those sounds, signs are not permitted, one of the reasons.
Other businesses could do the same thing if they wanted to. Maybe it would spur a business activity on our lakefront.
We don't have other businesses on our lakefront.
We have one, actually two, including the farmer's market, which are farmers charging for a fee. And I see it as an activity by the government. We're engaging with them just the way we are with the other group and allowing them on city property. I don't know how that's not an activity of a unit of government. We're allowing people on our property for the benefit of pulling, hopefully, visitors down to the lakefront, and so they come back. They might not come back the first time for their hot dog, but as far as visitors, I know people visit the downtown lake, and it's a nice addition to have there and has been since probably an adventure, 15 years since Todd, the hot dog guy, was there at one point. So it has some interesting history over the years, and it is part of our town's character. I don't know why we don't at least treat the two groups the same at a minimum. Is there a reason why, Marcus, there would be no sign on the days that the farmer's market, because I thought that might be a solution for the short term here until the DDA is positioned to review off-premises signs in a more organized fashion? Is there a reason, Jerry or Marcus, that we would not allow them that day? Is it just a courtesy to the farmer's market, or why, why would that matter?
Then, I believe, also congestion as well, but I don't know if you wanted to add.
I think these are several things. One, in terms of the farm market, two, and I looked this up before, and I apologize because I don't remember, it has been in existence for a number of years. It's almost like, in terms of the sign, it's almost like a non-conforming use, pre-existing non-conforming use that the city has allowed year after year after year. Like, I guess my concern is that, and I have nothing against Mr. Richardson, and he knows that, is that it doesn't meet the standards of the ordinance, regardless of the farm market. And, and we have had about a half a dozen at least other businesses, not located directly on the lake, but they're located on side streets, that have inquired about placing signs on Mitchell Street. And if this particular request doesn't meet the standards of the ordinance, theirs won't either, but what's to prevent us from, you know, from them coming here, you know, and having, why can't they have signs as well?
I would just say they're not on city property, and I, I see where you're coming from, but they, they're not operating a business on city property. They've picked their own location that's private, and nothing is stopping them theoretically from doing what this business has done, which is having some sort of a partnership where we permit them year after year to set up his cart in a traditional spot. And not even knowing what came first, the chicken or the egg, in other words, the code or the farmer's market, to me, it's not even, they don't fit in the nonprofit or the activities and operations unless you look at it as, as the way I do, which is, we're contracting with them, we're approving them, and either staff or council. But I appreciate your, your concerns. Yes, absolutely.
From the DDA standpoint, I think the way they would respond to that is, I may not be on city property. I'm on private property. I'm a, a owner of a business on a side street, but I'm paying city taxes, and I'm also paying an extra fee to be in the DDA, and in essence, I'm supporting those folks. You know, I'm paying taxes indirectly, supporting those folks that are being allowed to use city property at no cost whatsoever. And I just don't know what the DDA would say. That's not fair.
Right. It is open to the public. Others could apply, and as well, the grocery store down the street is already getting hurt by the, by the situation that we have, which is allowing a non-conforming sign to be placed, at least in the city's view. Those are just the thoughts I had about it. I just think it's fair that we let the applicant speak as soon as council's done.
I have one question. First of all, statement and then a question. As far as drawing people from the townships downtown, I think not only the farmer's market, I wouldn't play one over the other. When you look at a climate, you look at all factors that, that influence people coming downtown or by the lake. When it's warm and it's beautiful outside, people go on their lunch break and they say, "Let's go down there by the lake and let's have a hot dog." And, you know, same thing with the farmer's market. That's just my statement. I don't see one over the other. But I thought last year, there was a, I remember the compromise and that the DDA, and didn't you work something out where a sign was placed in the park down there pointing, or that the park, that the cart was on the other side? Didn't you allow that, I think? Wasn't that a compromise?
Because Mr. Richardson does have a sign that's placed at the corner of, of Lake and Cass.
Yeah. Wasn't that a compromise?
It's the intersection. He's been putting it there. We basically allowed it to happen there because of the close proximity to the cart, but he does have a sign at that location. And he has, the sign can be placed there whenever, it's placed there whenever his business is open generally.
Yeah, I thought that was a compromise, but I could be wrong.
Can we go on? And this policy is not affecting that location?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else before we let the applicant? We're doing it a little bit backwards, but I think some discussion was good on.
Well, another example I can think of is like, let's say, a, a restaurant downtown, a block or two from the corner of Mitchell and Cass, because that's kind of the main or major intersection with folks coming in from the east at least, came, if, if they want to put a sign right there at that corner saying, you know, "My business is that way, lunch is that way, and we don't allow that." So I don't, I don't know where we could, you know, draw the line, I guess.
Is their business a governmental activity? Is this one that we're providing on our lakeshore, on our city property, a governmental activity?
Is this a governmental activity?
I think we.
Is the hot dog cart a governmental activity?
He's coming here to ask permission, so I guess it would be.
He's coming here to ask permission for the, it's a licensed business to use on public property, but I don't think it's a government, it's not governmental.
I think it's great that he has a fair net, we allow him to do that.
I do too.
I just can't see putting a sign on the corner of Mitchell and Crosby or Cass.
I think it's sign closer, yeah.
Other than the farmer's market.
Okay. Mr. Richardson, what would you like us to know, if anything, tonight?
Louis Richardson, 201 South Street. That cart's been there 15 years. Todd started it there. The sign that you were talking about, Mr. Mellon, was Todd's had it there the whole time, so it wasn't really a compromise. That's where it was allowed. Eight years ago, we acquired the, the cart from Todd because he got sick of hot dogs, but, you know, it's still a good thing. At the same time, he was doing his cart, we were doing festivals around the area downtown to raise funds for consumers of mental health, which is what the cart still does. Last year, we were able to take 70 consumers of mental health down Detroit Tigers. That's including Special Olympians, DBSA, some people from Club Cadillac, but now, in general, people that are consumers of mental health, it doesn't matter where they come from, they're also employed there. I still maintain that it is of public interest because it's getting us down to the lake. It's getting, that's our point of interest. I mean, that getting them down the lake and getting them to come back. As far as people coming from outside areas, we have people come from Boone, Buckley, over to that cart to have lunch. And so there is people come from outlying areas. When we had the constructs going through downtown, there was people that were forced to go by us, and one of the best things we could have had was that construction going on downtown. But there was a lot of people that came through that had been living here, did not realize that that cart was there and how awesome it is for the lakes. And, and we have people that have come by throughout town. They're coming through here, they're just going, they're not stopping at a restaurant downtown, they're cruising through. And so I'm trying to give them an option. We're trying to give them an option, come down, visit the lake, have a quick lunch. And that's all we're looking for. And we just, we don't, still don't see what the problem is. We, and our books show that all the funds coming in go right back out. We are weeks, I'm looking at two months away, from getting our 501(c)(3). We've been working on it a while, and it's so close. We're certaling for DBSA, which is Depression Bipolar Support Alliance out of Chicago. I've been facilitating a group every Tuesday night of that for 10 years, and so we get some more employees and I just really, again, and I just see this as, as a win for the city. People that are just cruising through, come down to see the lakes. That's, that's our focal point. And I feel like, and last year, we, we'll put it off, put it off. And I feel like, and last year, we, we'll put it off, put it off, because we're going to do them road signs, whatever happened. I understand things are happening, but we're just trying to stimulate some growth. I mean, just to get the Tigers actually seeing that we were weighed down two years ago on the people we could take down and they asked what happened and, I mean, they're great people, and we haven't had the funds. So they pitched in last year and donated a lot of tickets, which was awesome. By the time we paid now four bucks a gallon, get everybody down there and back, that's just, you know, this is not what I do for a living. I would like to do it for a living. I do a retirement and life insurance. But this is where my passion's at, stems from my daughter. She's 24 now, mentally she's at six, and that's where my heart goes out to everyone in that community. We try to employ as many as we can and we give them picnics throughout the year. And we're just looking for any help we can get.
When do you plan on, or have you already, when is, do you have a date or is there a rule in terms of what day this is allowed to start in the parks?
Oh, no. People were asking, when we had the warm spell a few weeks ago, "How come you're not open?" Because it got winter again. So it's a, it's a, normally around Labor Day is where we shoot for it, the latest to be open. And if the weather's nice and staying steady up to there, we'll get open before then.
You were still talking? I just, you had mentioned something that seems pretty critical, that in a couple of weeks you may have your 501(c)(3) license. I think, well, I don't, maybe the thought to do is to put this on hold and when that license is here, then it can be brought up again if it's only a couple of weeks away.
If I can just add a point of clarification, the licenser, the permit from the city for Mr. Richardson to operate has already been granted, so he can open up shop.
Right. But if he has a 501(c)(3), then he's in compliance with the ordinance for an off-premise sign. So if we could table this until such time as you have that, then I would be delighted to grant you that sign. I'm so concerned about the slippery slope sort of thing that you hear way too much, but that if it's not in compliance with the ordinance as a, as not a nonprofit thing, even though you do, and I remember saying this to you last year, that I know that who you service and who benefits the most from this operation, but legally, if you're a nonprofit, then bingo, we all, it's unanimous. We all say, yes, please put your sign out there, like for the bead show or like for the church's thing that they're bizarre or whatever. But as it stands now, it's not, it's not in compliance. Can we table this and give it a couple of weeks and see how that?
But isn't a part of that same, same part of that ordinance you're talking about says, "Or for good of the community"? And this is for the good of the community?
But you could open up, let's say it got 90, okay, and for the sake of argument, and you could open up because the license been granted and then when your 503(c) comes through, then you could start putting the sign out. You could just come back to us. But I mean, that's not going to stop you from operating.
Oh, no. No, of course not. We could open up tonight or whenever, tomorrow morning. Our thing is trying to look down the road, get these people Detroit Tigers, get them out of their group homes. I'm looking at $4 a gallon and anything we can do.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I see that as a way of being able to bridge this.
It'd be an easier step.
It'd be, yeah, without dividing.
And I agree.
You expect it in two weeks?
No, I'm saying two months, the latest two months is what I'm being told.
To me, the other one's not a nonprofit, but whatever council's view is, I just see this as, we are treating this as apples and oranges and they're apples. And sometimes when someone files for it, have you filed for it yet? Do you know if you filed the application?
For the 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
A lot of groups have recognized that as if they filed it and it's pending because it does take forever to get through.
Can you bring that paperwork in and we'll take a look at that at the next meeting?
Yes.
I would go with that.
I would go with that.
As long as it's filed and you bring it in, we'll take a look at it and then we'll, at the next meeting.
Mr. Richardson, if you can get that to Jerry, we can then put it back in the packet and get it on our agenda.
Very good. That sounds awesome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, then, is it appropriate or more appropriate then for this action to be tabled until such time that it comes back with additional documentation? Or is it better to vote however you wished about it?
I'd rather table it, I think.
Tabled, if we're going to go by the Roberts rules, is that it comes up at the very next meeting and we could just postpone ruling on it or, excuse me, voting on it tonight. That's the legal term, but if you guys want to call it tabling and just make that indefinite, I'm fine with that, too. Okay, so let's have a motion from council to make sure this is clear.
That wasn't clear at all.
I'll make a motion to deny Mr. Richardson's request until we hear back from him that things have changed in regards to the legal status of his business.
Okay, I support that.
All right. So we're actually going to take, instead of just tabling it, we're going to do a denial.
And then he'll resubmit it.
I'll have the paperwork here by the next council meeting.
So should we just?
Why don't we just table it?
I'm just thinking that, I'm just thinking of past practice when we table something about, we just table it versus denying the action.
Yeah, let's table it.
Okay, these two gentlemen on my left, I think, would like just to table it. Would you be interested in withdrawing your motion and support?
I will withdraw my motion.
And I withdraw my support.
Okay, so we're just going to delay action, take no action tonight as council, fine with that. Everybody's nodding in approval. Mr. Richardson, thanks for coming in. Did we miss anything tonight, Marcus and/or Jerry, that you've thought of that you want to tell us to think about?
Thank you, council.
I don't think so. I'm walking away, if you will, with having this coming back a week from now.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
At the point of information, Mr. Richardson did tell me about his filing status and essentially I suggested what you acted on tonight, is bring in the paperwork, but we haven't seen it yet, so, but I'm sure it's, will be in process.
All right, getting that status just has taken forever for many groups in this town. I just wonder how realistic that could be, but we'll certainly wait and see what happens. Marcus, it looks like we've got another community event here. We'll find out if this has a community purpose and whether it's a-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, doesn't look like there's anyone here from the Northern Michigan Bead and Jewelry Show, but we do have another event. They are requesting an off-premise sign on a temporary basis to be placed at Mitchell and Pine Street as well as Mitchell and Cass Street on April 14, 2012, directing traffic to the Cadillac Junior High School accordingly. I'm not going to regurgitate all of the code provisions that I just read to you, but I will add that with respect to this agenda item, there are four notes that we have. One, the show represents a short-term or one-day public fundraising event to help benefit the Cadillac Arts Council. Two, admission fees to the show are designated to the building fund of the Cadillac Arts Council, a not-for-profit organization. Three, the purpose of the temporary signs is to direct motorists to the location of this short-term event. And four, the signs and their locations are not anticipated to conflict with nearby traffic control signs or devices, nor are they anticipated to cause harm to the public safety. Based upon that, it is the staff's recommendation to approve these temporary signs subject to the following. One, that signs placed within the right-of-way or state trunk line located in the city of Cadillacs shall comply with the permitting requirements, excuse me, and standards of MDOT is applicable. Two, that the signs shall not interfere with any pedestrian or vehicular movement or impact public safety. And three, that the period of display shall be limited to April 14, 2012. City council did approve a similar request for the same show back in 2011. That's my report.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of the Michigan, Northern Michigan Bead Show for the, to place a temporary sandwich board sign at the intersection of Mitchell and Pine Street and Mitchell and Cass Street on April 14. Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Marcus, could you give us a roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Spolman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Melma.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes.
Motion carried. Does that cover you, Mr. Petcha?
That does, but I do have one more item under another section of our agenda this morning.
I see that. Marcus, looks like we're down to adoption of ordinances and resolutions, seeing that we have no introduction of ordinances and resolutions on our agenda tonight. And it looks like you have something from Consumer Power. Is that this document over here by chance?
That is that document. This is, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it's a resolution to approve an easement being given to Consumer Power. This is with respect to allowing the new well field to continue to be connected accordingly and to get the necessary power that they need. Jeff, if there's anything you'd like to add to that, it's a pretty typical easement document that you have before you tonight. I'm not sure if there's any questions you might have with me, but it's just necessary as part of the ongoing construction of the well field.
Currently, there's a pole in the right-of-way that consumers would normally just go off that pole and run power to us, but it already has a couple of transformers for homes hanging on it. So when consumers, when that happens, they have to set another pole, run the power from the existing pole to the second pole, so they can actually run power into us that way. They won't run it off a pole that has transformers hanging on it. So in order for them to fit the pole in the project, they need an easement, which is 30-foot, 30-foot by, I think, 26-foot, right on the corner, the northeast corner of our property.
What's council wishes, what are your wishes, rather, with this?
I think we should grant this easement to Consumers Energy for the purpose of providing power to the new well field.
Support.
Is this located down by Cobb Street then, Jeff, or?
Yes. It'll just be, when you go past the well field, you'll see a power pole there and they're just going to set one back about, I think, 10, 15 feet off of the one that's existing, so they can run the lines from one to the other and then down to us. Right off of Crosby.
I said Cobb's.
Yeah.
It's on the Crosby side.
Excuse me.
Okay. Just would point out, it's about five feet from my property, neither here nor there, but I've just put that out on the record.
Don't touch down wires.
Thanks. It's usually too late.
Is that what it was?
If that was, yeah, that's what that was.
Okay, so do we vote on this?
We would like a motion.
I did.
And a support. Who was the supporting party? Doug, thank you. And I'm ready to have a roll call, Marcus, if you are.
Be happy to. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Melma.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Spolman.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes, motion carried. And there's a document here, Marcus, it does look like it needs to be notarized, though. Do we have a notary that I and I could both sign in front of, because it looks like it?
Do you want a notary?
It needs two signatures.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we'll catch Mike before we run out to hearing. And next up would be our reports of boards and commissions. Looks like Wexford County Board of Commissioners meeting, March 7th, minutes from the Cadillac Housing Committee Commission, January 23rd and February 20th, and the minutes from the DDA, Business Improvement District Board, which met on July, excuse me, February 29th. Anything remarkable or not remarkable about those?
At this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have no appointments tonight and that brings us down to public comments slash public appearances. Anyone wishing at this time from the public to stand under the same circumstances, please come forward. Mr. Fawcett has reappeared.
Yes, Fawcett.
Yes.
1200 East 34th Road. I just want to clear up a couple of things. I don't want anybody to have the opinion I've got anything against the fine fire department the city of Cadillac has over what I said earlier. I have personal friends on that fire department here, George Labby, Nate Yarlitz, on and on. And I'm sure there was not a fireman in the building next to us that wasn't just itching to, "Why can't we go out and help and forewarn fire?" The policy came from above. I've yet to know a fireman that doesn't want to help fight a fire no matter where it is. So it was absolutely nothing against the fine fire department we got. As far as the police department, years ago, when Herring was talking about contracting with the sheriff to put on an extra couple of deputies to take care of the business district in Herring Township, I suggested more than once. The city is immediately adjacent to us. The city police are one minute from where there'd be a problem. The Wexford County Sheriff's Department might be at Buckley and I encouraged the township, which they don't want to listen or do, to go to the city police, to go to the city council and see what extra money we could pay to them to take care of the north. And it didn't happen, but I just want to clear, we got a very, very fine fire department, one of the best I know of, and the same with the police department. Last but not least, I want to apologize for the exchange with Mr. McCurdy and I as I was walking out. That was entirely inappropriate at this time and place, but I have got so sick of him making comments about me. Ever since three years ago, when the issue came up about the improper buying of property, I would ask the judge to interpret just what the city attorney said, and that's what it was about. I've got so sick of his comments, either here or on the street, or Mr. Huckel allowing him, McCurdy, to use the portion to make comments under online news articles constantly. It's supposed to be for an exchange of ideas to better people, instead of constant attack on, and it does get kind of tiring after a while, but I do apologize, it was very inappropriate for this meeting. And please, if you can find some way with Herring Township for a reasonable, don't say fair, everybody's got their own idea of what fair is, reasonable agreement to benefit both parties, because both parties are going to suffer if some kind of agreement is not reached, preferably on water and sewer. If you sell a sewer service, let us pay you then for the city workers to take care of them immediately next to here instead of out to the DPW. This is ridiculous, but I'm afraid it's too late, but I hope it's not. In all sincerity, this isn't going to benefit me any more than it is anybody else in the area. Well, thank you very much, and again, I apologize for the exchange.
Thank you. Any other public appearances, also known as public comment? Seeing no one else come forward, we are going to slide to tabled items, which we have none tonight. Good of the order, we are running a little bit behind what we wanted to, but we still can make it out to hearing by 7 o'clock and we did put a closed session on our agenda tonight. What do you want to do, Marcus, at this point?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one I wanted to mention for not just the city council, but for everybody that might be watching, while we're taping and broadcasting live right now, we will not have the ability to broadcast live from Herring Township. We will, however, have another camera there that will be videotaping it and we will be able to replay our joint meeting with Herring Township's board accordingly on the CCTV. With respect to the closed session that we had added this evening, it's my understanding that with respect to timeliness issues, we still have the time to have that same update provided at our next council meeting, which is a week from today. Therefore, I would like us to, or rather, I'd like the council to consider going into closed session at 5:30 in the evening on Monday, the 16th of April, for the same purposes that I had mentioned at the beginning of this evening, due to, again, that we don't have the time to discuss them this evening before leaving for hearing.
Okay. Should we announce that special session at this point in the meeting tonight and set it?
We could do that. So we would be setting the special session to convene at 5:30 for the purposes of going into a closed session for receiving legal updates from the city- the purposes of going into a closed session for receiving legal updates from the city attorney on Mayor Burnett v. Blackburn, Herring v. city, and opinions regarding language on road patrol.
Now, we had talked about a work session at 5?
The first meeting in May.
That's in May. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we set a special meeting of the city council at 5:30 April 16 to go into closed session to receive updates concerning the hearing versus Cadillac, as well as the city of Cadillac versus Jim Blackburn, and also related to language with the road patrol mileage discussion.
Then we're going to do that then, instead of right now?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is there support for that?
Support.
There's motion and support. Let's get this out of the way. Mr. Petcha, could you give us a clerk's rendition of our names, please?
Councilmember Melma.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Burnett.
Yes. Not so easy, is it, Marcus?
Not so easy. It's like, what's that?
Don't chew gum.
Don't chew gum, yeah, thank goodness. With respect to the rest of our agenda this evening, once we are finished with the good of the order, we're not adjourning, but we're convening to Herring Township off of Bell Avenue. Once that meeting is finished, we will then officially close and adjourn our meeting in their facility.
Jim, Marcus.
Okay. Is the council willing to waive any comments of good of the order? Does somebody have something that would take less than a few seconds, or how do you want to proceed with what's left on our agenda?
I just want to, I normally would, but I want to address one quick item, just so that it's, it's clear. I mean, I, we did talk about an ethics ordinance that was brought up, and Mr. McCurdy brought up a request about me negotiating with this, so I'm going to throw it out to the council. But I will mention, I was part of that committee way prior before this. I've been working on this. And the irony here is we're in a no-win situation, because I got to tell you right now, if, if they build their own plant, somehow it's going to come back on me then, too. So either way that gets perceived, it could come out as a conflict. But since it was addressed in tying in with the ethics ordinance, I'm going to bring that out, but I see no reason. I've been on that, part of that committee in 2006, way before any of this came up. And I, a quick note is that ethics ordinance, if it had been in, none of that probably would have occurred, because that would have been an extra step. It would have probably added to the misdemeanor potentials or the conflicts that would have been addressed in the ethics ordinance. So unless I hear from a majority of the council, I, I do not see it, but I want this to go under full council's understanding, so there's no later issues that come forward. But I don't see the relationship one bit in terms of that. It's two different items. And like I said, mark my words, somehow if they do their own plant, it's going to come back on me anyhow. So somehow I'll be responsible for that from the same individual. So I don't know how you get out of that without it being deemed that.
Okay. Any other good of the order? Anything else on that side? You guys are okay? We can hold our breath till next week, or at the end of the meeting tonight. I'm going to, unless anyone else has a final cat call, curtain call. We're all set.
We're not adjourned.
Okay. We are moving to, we're reconvening in Herring.
Raise your there.